Okay, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'm going to be serving as the moderator for this meeting this evening. So, first thing we'd like to do is add to the agenda or make a change in the agenda. Representative Jim Harrison is here, and I would like to move that we allow him to speak so he can get on to his other towns.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Jim, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. Do you want me any particular spot?
I think you should face the crowd.
Okay, well, I don't want to give my back to you.
Oh, no, that's fine.
I can see you on the screen.
You know, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to check in. And that's really what I'm doing, is checking in. We had an election November 5th, as everyone knows. I saw some of you when I was making my rounds on Election Day. So, it was an interesting outcome in Vermont. I think what happened, and everybody can have their opinion on what happened, I think the voters by and large in Vermont voted for a little bit more balance at the State House. As most of you know, if you follow the news, the legislature in the past biennium had what's called a supermajority. And what that meant is there was enough on the majority party, the Democratic Party, to override vetoes if they stuck together, which they did 12 times, and enacted laws by overriding the vetoes. The new legislature, just to give you an example, this past session, there was 105 Democratic members. You need 100 to override a veto. Now, there will be 7. In those changes, the 18 seats or 19 seats, depending on how you count the Libertarian, all went to the Republicans. So, the Republicans are still in the minority. However, unless the Republicans vote to override a gubernatorial veto, nothing will get enacted without the governor's okay. I think that's healthy because, and I'm showing my biases, but it forces a conversation. It forces compromise so that the Democrats will still drive the agenda in the State House because they do have a majority, both the House and the Senate. But it will, the veto pen will mean something now, and so that will force conversations. The Senate went from basically a 17, or went from a 23 to 7 split. Now, it's 17 to 13 if you count the progressives number as a Democrat. Additionally, we have a new lieutenant governor being elected, John Rogers. It still has to be blessed by the legislature because he didn't get 50%. I think he has 49%. But typically, the legislature does vote for the person who got the most votes. So, that's likely to be a change there as well. What does that mean in terms of issues? Probably a lot of people have heard about the Clean Heat Standard and some of the estimates that it was going to increase the price of fuel oil by anywhere from 70 cents to $4 a gallon. I would dare say that bill is dead. It had to go back to the legislature for a re-vote. I say dead in terms of how it was proposed. There could be some tink on it, and there could be some kind of compromise. Remains to be seen. What I think most of us heard the last few months, loud and clear, was a concern over education finance and property taxes. Property taxes aren't entirely the fault of folks up here. Most of our property taxes, as you all well know, are related to educational finance. We have, and Megan knows because it's the same system when you were serving, a very, very complicated system. No one can tell you when they vote at town meeting what your property taxes are going to be as a result of that vote. It only happens after most of the school budgets have been passed. Go to the state, the state has to pay those bills, and then tries to figure out how much money is in the Ed Fund, and then sets a statewide education rate, which does, you know, change a little bit depending on your respective town, common level of appraisal, and your actual school spending. So, it's complicated at best. I think that will be a, perhaps, the top issue coming before the legislature. This past spring, when the legislature overrode the veto on the property tax bill, they put in there a two-year study commission to come up with proposals to change not only the financing, but how do we restructure education to perhaps improve efficiencies? As far as I'm concerned, I think the two years, you can go out the window. There's a call for action now. There've been, I think people are just, I think it's just one more study. So, I may be wrong, but that's what I think will happen. I think there'll be a lot of conversations. I don't have the answer to how that's all going to work. But we're going to have a conversation, yes?
At our last meeting, the new superintendent came and announced that they're going to be speaking to parents, state town government officials, and just residents about the budgets before they quit.
And I think that's smart.
Yeah.
Conversations are definitely helpful. They're not easy. But, I mean, I'll just throw out there, maybe sound like a simple, but nothing's simple. Vermont is the size of Boston for population. We have 55 supervisory unions. That's a lot of, that's not teachers in the classroom. That's just a lot of overhead. Some of it's necessary, some of it has got to be duplicative. So, that's just one little issue. The other challenge we have, in large part to our change in demographics, we have a system built for, I think, 125,000 students. We only have 75,000. So, you're paying for a lot of space in some cases. You're heating that space, you have smaller classrooms, some of which is good. But it creates challenges. Can't change that on the dime, but there's got to be some good, hard conversations. I went to a education meeting in West Rutland High School, and I made the comment to the principal, who happens to be a Chittenden resident, and he didn't take it personally. I said, "You, West Rutland, have a graduating high school class typically of, what, 15, 18 students, maybe?" On the way over to West Rutland, we went through Proctor, just a couple miles away. They have a graduating class of 15 students on a typical year. It would be hard to argue that, at the very least, those two schools should be merged together. We're talking high school when you have multiple subjects and, you know. It's just not very efficient. On the other hand, if I lived in Proctor, I would want to keep my school. So, it's hard. But we got to have those conversations. But there'll be plenty of time for that. There's going to be a lot of conversation, a lot of discussion as to the best path forward. Another issue, and it impacts the cost of education, but it impacts the cost of everything else. We have, you've probably seen something in the news, Vermont is on the high end of healthcare costs. Some of it, again, related to demographics, some of it because of our rural nature. Healthcare is expensive no matter where you go, but even more so in Vermont in many aspects. The, there was a consultant, you might have heard about some of the recommendations in terms of our hospital network. And as soon as those recommendations were made, i.e. closing perhaps some or reconfiguring some of those hospitals, you heard the, oh, not us, I mean, you can't, and I get it. You want to have a hospital close by. If we have one down in Townsend, I think it is, with, what, 15 beds? Think of the overhead of running that where, yep, Brownsville or Scottsdale aren't too far away. 20 miles is, 20 miles is too far when you need something. So, again, more difficult conversations to be had. UVM was criticized for having high overhead by the Green Mountain Healthcare Board. Cut that, you know, people here are not too happy about, as well as other areas. So, it's, again, another Barney issue, but it's going to take some people rolling up their sleeves and being honest and making some unpopular decisions. So, the other thing I will just mention quickly, and it's really way too early to know what the new Congress will do in Washington. I typically don't worry a lot about Washington. That's a different arena. I'm not elected to represent you in Washington. However, over one-third of the revenues coming into the state for state budget purposes, and that includes education, but certainly Medicaid is the biggest. If there are changes that impact the federal funds coming into Vermont, that could create additional budget challenges in our state. So, I will leave it at that. I am interested also if the town has specific requests or things that is on your radar. That could help me. I know you talked about the appraisal issue before, Megan, and I've made note of that. And I'll try to get the right person to talk to the town.
Thank you, and we'll, we'll keep you posted on what we're interested in. You know, as the session rolls out, I'm sure we will be. So, thank you.
Okay, no, thank you. Thank you again for your collective support. Maybe next time we get Greg over there, we're using him. And thank you for working with my schedule.
Sure.
Now, on to Chittenden before I go to Killington, so.
Well, have fun, give them our regards.
It feels like a town meeting, informational town meeting. I want to make the tour, but I'll go. Thank you all, and I hope all have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
You as well, thanks, Sarah. Take care.
All right, thanks Ryder.
Sarah, in addition, we have had some new arrivals since we started. Patty Lancaster, Fred, and Chris also. Fred? Bagley and Chris Baer also, okay? And it looks like there's some people of someone on the phone on, and I don't know, we don't know who that is. So, whoever's on the phone, could you let us know who you are?
Who, yeah?
You're muted.
Which one are you looking for?
Well, we got this says phone, this says MK, David Charles. So, are you seeing those, Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, so should we continue or wait until we know who else on the call?
I don't think anybody's divulging their information. If they wish to speak, they'll have to identify who they are and state your name if you do, raise your hand or wish to speak to the select board.
Okay, that makes sense.
They don't need to if they're not going to speak.
Okay, all righty, so moving forward, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the signing of the payroll and the orders. The payroll, $9,623.87, and the orders are $438,484.24.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from 11:06. Did we sign, we both signed those?
We signed those, yep.
Yeah, we both signed those, yep.
Yep, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sarah, do we have the audit information here?
We don't, we, Jesse has not received the audit yet, so we can table that discussion. Sorry, I didn't bring that up when you were approving the agenda.
That's all right, I just didn't know. I know you added some stuff to my pile since I was here late earlier today. We also had a Cream Hill Road permit to construct within a right-of-way from the McNeils, and I think Chris, you've been met with them?
Yes.
And so, we, I'm going to make a motion that we approve that permit.
Was it already done, wasn't it? Works already done? Yeah, well, this is the final, I'm going to.
That's the sign off.
So, I'd like.
Just to sign off on the completion.
Yeah, to make a motion that we sign off on the completion of the project.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
We received another notice of open meeting law complaint, and we have done a investigation. So, I'm going to read the results of our investigation.
Be an investigative body?
On November 6th, 2024, the Town of Mendon Select Board received a letter from Mr. and Mrs. Brian Gates alleging that Mr. Gates had been excluded from a Mendon Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting on November 4th, 2024. The letter alleged a violation of Vermont's open law and cited BSA 314. The Select Board investigated the allegation and fines. The Mendon Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting was scheduled for November 4th, 2024 at 5:30 p.m. to hear an appeal for Coletta on Black Bear Path. At 5:23 p.m., Mr. and Mrs. Gates arrived for the hearing and entered the town office. Rutland County Sheriff Deputy Ryder Paskovich was present inside the building. Mr. Gates immediately became confrontational, demonstrating hostility and yelling profanities to zoning board of adjustment members already inside the building. Deputy Paskovich immediately responded to maintain decorum. Unable to correct his foul language and unruly behavior, Mr. Gates was required to leave the building by Deputy Ryder Paskovich. Once outside, Mr. Gates continued to harass additional members of the zoning board of adjustments and the zoning administrator. Mr. Gates stepped in front of the zoning administrator, preventing him from entering the building while continuing to yell profanities. Mr. Gates left the parking area on his own accord. It is our determination that Mr. Gates was expelled from the Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting on November 6th, 2024 for causing disruption in violation of open meeting laws, and no cure is necessary.
Brian, I'd like to see who has this hand up.
Why you mentioned in my name, number one? Why ain't you mentioned in the person that actually made me leave? Which was Jack Cannelli, wasn't he? No, he wasn't. Yeah, after what, after he had, I asked his twice. I didn't ask him for his permission. As big as I asked for his.
Brian?
It's the foul language and unruly behavior which is recent.
I'm allowed to talk like that to my government?
Not, not, not profanities, no, no, sir.
No profanities?
No, sir.
We had words, and everyone was.
Brian?
No profanities, zero profanities.
Even the sheriff.
No profanities.
Brian?
Oh, no, we came down and shouted out profanities same time.
Please be seated.
Why you mentioned my name and accused me of anything?
Because.
Are you an investigative body? Since when do you have the authority to investigate anything?
This is how.
I'm asking.
This is how we're responding.
No, so if you would have responded properly, this procedure for this, within 10 days, you're supposed to call a hearing with the person and the accuser. Jack Cannelli?
Brian?
I don't even know if I ever seen him mention.
Brian, please be seated.
No, they didn't, I'm asking them.
We did an investigation, we watched the video footage of all of, everything that happened, and we talked to the sheriff, and we talked to Jack Cannelli, and we did a full investigation.
Why you mentioned his name in this letter?
We.
You didn't?
No, because we said that.
That's who we were accusing.
Right.
Right, but you didn't put his name in it, but in the letter, you're accusing me of things, which are totally within my right.
Brian?
It's not accusations.
It's a our accusation, read the letter.
We're responding to the complaint.
Well, you have 10 days to respond, and you didn't do that. You're supposed to hold a hearing. Why don't you guys listen, look at the rules and the procedures that you're supposed to follow, along with all the other boards who aren't following the procedures and the rules as well?
Brian, could you please stop?
I'm just saying.
I understand, you've said your piece, we're going to move on with the meeting. I need you to be quiet, or we're going to ask you to leave.
Public comments coming up.
That's right, and it's not right now. So, please be quiet.
Okay, moving on.
Under announcements, we, I have one more Select Board interview tomorrow. We're hoping that next meeting, two weeks from tonight, that we will be announcing our selection for the vacant seat that will, the person will serve until town meeting in '25. And so, now we have public comments. Anybody on the computer have their hand up? Nope, aye, anybody? Okay, so as, to remind you, Brian, two minutes for public comments.
Before my two minutes stops, why don't we go? When, at the last meeting, you made my wife on the timer at two minutes. When that gentleman walked in, you didn't time him, you let him go on.
This is part of your two minutes right now, what you're saying.
So, then you went on, you didn't follow procedure. You had already finalized the agenda for the night. But then you put the gentleman on the agenda. That isn't proper procedure as well. You let him go on, and you didn't time.
Brian, is this your public comment?
Why, when you start like, oh, excuse me, I want to start it again because you interrupted me.
I've started your.
I'll ask to restart my two minutes.
Okay, you're, I'm restarting right now.
Why isn't anybody following procedures in this town? We're holding ZBA hearings without payment. We're holding hearings without any, any reason to hold a hearing? Just procedures for all this? Why aren't we following any procedures, along with you? You're not even following the procedure. And why isn't Sarah back to work? We spent $30,000, and our administrator is still not showing up at work. Why are we paying her?
Sarah works full-time.
Not from, her job is for here, not at home. She should be reporting just like everybody else that has a job. She should be putting in the time, she's not. Why?
Sarah's working full-time for the town.
Why she get to work at home? She has an office right there that we built her, and now we put $30,000 into security.
Do you have anything else you'd like to talk about?
Uh, I want another two minutes since you interrupted me again. I have another two minutes?
Two more minutes and.
Yep.
Now, you can't interrupt.
We will respond.
Well, if you're asking me questions, I'm responding.
You can respond after my.
We'll respond through emails. We will respond through email. Just two minutes, just go.
Go ahead.
Please.
You ain't, nobody listens anyway.
They're listening.
It's almost like nominating and appointing your own family. Those are conflicts of interest. There's no reason to do that here in town. When you don't know the regulations, you don't know procedures, you should look them up before you do it. People that do know the rules and regulations, you're not letting in the town because maybe they voted for Trump. It's almost like having Jim Harrison come in here and tell us everything's wrong because Trump won. Some people like Trump. Some people like them, don't live like most of you people.
Brian, can I say something real quick in response?
You just cut my two minutes off again?
No, we were, two minutes were done.
No, they weren't.
You sat down and said, "Never mind," and you continued speaking, correct? Okay, can I just respond?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, one piece of positive input as a resident of the town, as everybody else does, would be helpful, that's all I'm going to say. It would be very helpful, just some positive, if you want positive to happen.
I have, I have.
Help us.
It's almost like having, holding a ZBA hearing without payment or holding a ZBA hearing with no reason to hold it. There's regulations for that.
Brian?
They need to, they're supposed to look at.
We do understand regulations, we do understand.
It's not a ZBA meeting.
It's not a ZBA meeting either.
Why we, why aren't we following? Since when are you an investigative body? You don't have.
Brian, your time is up, and if you continue to speak, we're going to ask you to be removed. Your two minutes is up, okay?
Thank you for your input.
All right, any other public comment? Sarah, I'm not seeing anybody, no one in the room, so I'm going to move on to our business. The zoning administrator position temporary, with Steve, with Steve out on leave. We, the zoning board, zoning board, has, planning commission, excuse me. Planning commission has recommended to us that we approve Greg Smith as the interim zoning administrator, and I would like to move that we appoint Greg Smith as interim zoning commissioner, zoning administrator?
Yeah, I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I thought we already did, Brian, lastly, Brian?
We, Brian, Seth and I both just signed off on, the next order of business is the Barstow Shelter Memo of Agreement. We have just signed off on that, and the Barstow Facility Use Agreement for the Barstow Shelter. And Sarah, do you want to talk about that at all?
Yeah, I just want to report for the record that those updates was just updating contact information with those agreements. It's a requirement of the Barstow Unified Union School District that we have a, an active facility use agreement for the Barstow Shelter if, in fact, either one of the towns want to open the shelter in the event of an emergency. Our memo of understanding with, or memo of agreement with the Town of Chittenden lays out who is responsible for what when you open the shelter. We would be required to absorb the cost of running the shelter for three days before the Red Cross steps in. So, if Chittenden elected, if it was a regional event that affected both towns, then both towns would be responsible for the cost. If it was an event that only affected Mendon or Chittenden, either town is able to open the shelter at their cost. So, that's just a brief summary of it.
Okay. The next thing on the agenda is the budget, and we're talking about the budget timeline. But we have, Chris is here to talk about some great work that he's done on the town budget, and I'd like for you to share, share some of the information that you sent us in the memo, if that's all right, for the other members of the community.
Sure.
And then also Seth is going to make a comment about the fire safety, that part of the budget. So, Chris, why don't you go ahead and go first and tell, share your insight. This is Chris Baird, our road commissioner, and this is his first big budget undertaking.
Go ahead and stand up, Chris, if you can, you can find us.
And he's been very hard at work looking at the budget.
So, for the community that the Highway Department serves.
Chris, if you move back just a little bit, you'll be, no, the other way, I guess, sorry.
We're, right there, you're ready. So, for the community that we serve with the Highway Department, we are finally a three-man group. With that, we spent most of this spring and summer as just two people. And we managed to do 11 miles of ditch line in summer. That would be rock lining, cleaning out, taking care of some of last summer's washouts from those rainstorms that came through. With that, we tried to maintain the vehicles as best we can and the equipment that we have. This year, we did the road sweeping up on the upper roads to get the winter sand off. With that, we didn't contract it out this year, we did it ourselves with a pretty good degree of success. I have put in to the Select Board as part of my. I have put in to the select board as part of my budget that the current sweeper that we have that goes onto our loader is currently held together with literally cardboard and electric. The town budgets five thousand dollars to hire out a service to come and sweep the roads. The sweeper attachment to replace the one that we have is eleven thousand five hundred dollars. So in just over three seasons, it would pay for itself. Or I also put in there that the replacement parts are about six grand. The only true benefit, because we could do the replacement parts, is that the new one will come with a warranty. Which means that we wouldn't have to face it every time.
Chris, can I cut you off on that quick? How old is the old one? What is the, do you know the year or model?
It's a, it's a two thousand one.
Okay, perfect.
It's an old cast style. We can't put the water tank on it because it'll collapse the cardboard and fall in. So some people have said, you know, we created a dust cloud that was pretty bad. We tried to only do the sweeping when it rained. We can try to be respectful of that, but it is. I put in for, when it came to the vehicles, the F five fifty was up for replacement two years ago. It didn't get replaced in that cycle and it didn't get replaced in the last cycle. I requested some quotes, but just to show, if you wanted to access around, there'll be some other stuff in there that probably no one cares about. But if you just go through, this is what it looked like, all right? And I'll just give my phone to you, pass it around. It was fairly rusted out, but we took the time. I couldn't get them to print. I would've had the pictures for you, but that's what it looks like now. We cleaned it up, painted it, sanded it. Just, just to get it to look nicer. One of the things that we're trying to do, we're not trying to get new, just for the sake of new. Part of my budget is a vehicle maintenance program. Currently, right now, the price of the MAP, which is our largest vehicle, and Freightliner, which is our next largest vehicle, those replacement, those replacement costs are between a third and two-thirds higher than the trucks previously were. Thanks to inflation, depending on how we wanna look at it. So what cost a hundred and sixty-six thousand or a hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars is now closer to three hundred and ninety-nine thousand of a comparable piece of equipment. The MAP is somewhere in that four ninety-nine or a little below range. So I've sought to replace the five fifty with an F six hundred. We can get a heavier axle on it and the difference in cost was six hundred and forty dollars for a mildly larger truck. Part of this is to test it, to see how it will work. If we can do more with it than when the next large vehicle comes up, can we look at something like a seven fifty or what, if we stick with Ford, just the town likes Ford? You know, they make one that has like an international style body. Downside to that is the only place in Vermont that will sell that is Heritage up in Burlington. But the cost is about a hundred and forty-eight thousand for the chassis. Hundred and seventy-eight thousand for it to be fully built as a dump, which is a savings to the town of around, when you combine the two, it's closer to like six hundred thousand dollars that we could shave off of the future investment of replacing the vehicles. With that, there's a vehicle schedule, vehicle replacement schedule, supposed to be for the, for the larger ones. For the larger vehicles, it's, it's ten to twelve years, depending on how the vehicle was running.
So clearly Brian's kinda, kinda taking a real look at the way we're spending money in the equipment especially.
Oh, he's.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chris. I'm looking right at you. I'm sorry, Chris.
One, so the, the others, can't see, I'm on your mind. Always. What, so one of the other things is if the vehicle is maintained at a higher level, right? And we're, we're more consistent with how we service it, how we treat it. If we're not, I think everybody that I've met in the last couple of weeks knows that I got ran off the road on Wheeler. Right? Just where the car coming in, I chose to avoid the head-on collision. How did you stop? And then, they didn't stop. No one stopped.
Okay, so let's say, we're on the, we're discussing the budget.
So I asked for an additional twenty-six thousand towards the vehicle maintenance. With the idea being that you wouldn't have to replace the vehicles that much sooner if we were allowed to allot that the services could be done to each room. So whether that's, you know, every spring after we get through the winter season, we can send them to get, you know, make sure that the kingpins and the springs and the shackles and the U-boats are all up. And the way they should be worked. They're not, but they get fixed. Now the vehicle's not breaking down, we're taking care of it. Beyond that, you know, it's pretty, I asked for some money for some safety equipment. Hard hats, the biggest one being a trench box. OSHA requires, and MSHA requires, anytime you're working with previously disturbed soil, which is any road that we go on where there's a culvert already and you're working at a minimum depth of more than eighteen inches, that you have a trench box. The town of Mendon has not owned a trench box. It's not had one. And so that is the reason for looking into that. It doesn't have to be specifically from someone who can create one or who can go out and purchase one that is already made, depending on price. But that is, you know, some of the reasons for requesting that money.
And, and to tie into that, Seth was gonna look at safety equipment as well, so.
Yeah, I, I was just looking into, well, given the recent burn bans that we've had and the weather conditions that we've had for less, the patterns for the last couple of years. There's just a good risk of forest fires, you know, more than there has been in the past. New England wide, actually even. And we don't even have, I don't have a helmet or a jacket or anything to show up with myself. All the other towns, all our wardens and whatnot, they have their own gear and whatnot. So it's something that I was kinda just wanted to, it just, we just lifted the ban, the state just lifted the ban today at like two o'clock today. And it's been on for about, I wanna say almost a month now at this time of the year, which is very, it's a little strange, to so speak, so.
But as you're getting those quotes, if you can talk to Seth about any of the equipment you're getting quotes for because Sarah mentioned to me that there is a grant that we can apply for partial payment for safety equipment and that should probably.
Yeah, that should include that. And if, if given so too, Chris, I, as I mentioned to Sarah, I'd be looking at more like enough for like the road crew as well to have options of that fire year. We may need help if something like that really happens. So just something to think about, okay? So if you can peek into it, I'm gonna also look into it. I have spoken with some, some people in Killington and just even some of their older equipment. They've got updated stuff. It's not, they don't wanna go out and spend a lot of money on it, but I just think we should be prepared now.
Yeah, I agree. So the budget, as you can tell, we're working hard on the budget. We're, Sarah and I have a long meeting today. Jesse's submitted her materials. So our timeline is, you know, certainly to have, try to have the budget done by the end of the month, in December.
Chris, what was your final, I, I kinda missed the end of that though. Was it, you're requesting twenty-six thousand more, is that what you said?
For the vehicle maintenance.
Yeah, for the vehicle maintenance program.
Right now, right now.
It's all in there. It's a good memo.
Oh, it's in the memo, okay, okay. I didn't, I just saw.
Yeah, we have this memo from Chris.
Okay.
Test.
Okay. And that new sweeper would also allow a water tank on that, correct? Okay. Do me a favor and look into the GVWR for those smaller trucks and maybe just the life expense expectancy. Cause those heavier trucks, they are very expensive, but they do last a little longer and they can carry a little bit heavier payload.
Tell them about the dumps.
Yes.
Yes.
Just for, just look into that if you can.
Yeah, I have a quote coming from Sheldon Truck. No, they got replaced too, are they now?
Is it Charlie Boys now? Didn't Charlie Boys take over Sheldon or something? Cloud or something? Maybe Cloud or Ever? I know what you're talking about.
Eastern, eastern trucking. They're not a coal jester.
Okay. Yeah, just take a peek at that when you get it, be great.
Okay, yeah, so we have all the health insurance, the employees.
Thank you.
Employees have all picked their plans. We know what, we know what that budget number looks like and we're working within that. So. So that, so then the other item of business was the town report. And again, the town, we're asking all the town committees and departments to submit their reports. I'm sure Anne, you probably have a couple in your wheelhouse with the historical society. So we're gonna just start working on collecting that and trying to get our reports done quickly as possible. As efficiently as possible.
There you go, always something.
So that is all we have in the town, for the town meetings, so I'm gonna move that we adjourn select board meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, yes?
May the route for implementation committee and a request on the budget, just a great time to do that.
Yes, that can be included under budget timeline. So yes, you can submit to us.
As you, as you know, you appointed three residents to be the route for implementation committee.
Yes.
At a, at a previous meeting, Patty Lancaster, Dennis Apolo, Ben McConnell and myself. We're looking at short-term, medium-term and long-term solutions for our problem seven four. Short-term might be something like putting up some fixed radar speed feedback devices at both ends of the village district. Making some headway with the Appalachian Trail Conference on relocating the, the trail ends up on that crossing up on Route Four. Those kind of short-term things. Medium-term things would be looking at access management for some of our convoluted and complex driveways and intersections and so forth. Then in long-term is trying to get the state, when they repave Route Four, to do some, so they're thinking about restriping it for safer things.
What year is that, do you know?
We were last paved in two thousand thirteen, I believe, I think I have it. Anyway, we're doing the next three to four. You know, it's all state budget, right? And how many floods they have elsewhere as to when, but we're, ordinarily they do it every ten to fourteen years. So we're doing somewhere in a three to four-year range, according to our, our Brooklyn Regional Planning Commission consultant. In the, in the short-term, we'd like to request the select board put ten thousand dollars in the budget for at least one and preferably two radar speed feedback devices. There's lots of regulations as to, which are somewhat summarized here as to what you could put on them. We've all seen these devices, some of them with flashing blue lights and so forth. Those are not allowed on federal highways. There's a minimum height of the flashing light, of the light itself. There's, they now have to all be yellow and so forth. There's a whole list of federal requirements which is what this one sheet extract is, is from, from the MUTCD, I saw the federal domain, which is the federal regulations. There's also a four-page V-Trans list of requirements. I met with them today to learn about what they require in terms of right-of-way and setback and height and so forth. And there'd be a lot of issues that have to be answered. You can, you can get these devices that you see around the county for as little as three thousand pounds. We're kind of the low end, depending on how much data you wanna collect and how big the letters are and how good the batteries are and how big is the solar panel and so forth. Or they can run up into the almost five thousand dollar range if you want to have higher quality batteries, better solar, recharging, bigger lights, et cetera.
Does the one that we have currently, are we getting any data back on that? It doesn't seem to be working half the time.
It does not work half the time. It's a state police device. We're not paying for it and at some degree, we're getting what we pay for. The state police says they're not, my contact there says he would have to research how to extract the data from it. My guess is that it's working sporadically because either the solar panels are either archaic or old or worn, worn out. The batteries, the battery.
Yeah, I mean, the sun's been out.
There may be, you know, there may be corrosion, connection issues.
Any ideas on that?
It's, it's an old machine.
Okay. I meant to ask, I was gonna give you a call on that because it was there for a while and I'm like, it's up.
Has there been any, I mean, any feelings on it being there? I mean, I know it reminds me to slow down when I see.
I've talked to businesses up and down, the orchards and, and the Apollos and Allen, I've talked to some businesses. And anecdotally, they think that they're seeing less squealing and merging and honking and so forth. That's their impression. I spoke with the, the, I don't know what, his title is, the Wallingford individual who was in charge of their signs today. He says, as you know, he come to Wallingford, coming off Holane Road and there's a turn there, there's a sign. A sign, it's an older white style sign, but he says it's definitely made an impact in their village. None of us on the committee think this is gonna solve our problems.
No.
It's a start. It's number one, is gonna demonstrate to the businesses in this section of Route Four that we care as a town about what happens in front of their businesses from a safety and also patronizing aspect. I think it'll demonstrate to the community that the community is concerned about it. I think it'll demonstrate to the state that Mendon is concerned and we can leverage that to work on state limits and other things going forward. It would be, I don't know what the threshold is for having to put things out to bid.
Sarah's already, Sarah's already doing that.
But we can, we, our committee met with Chris and with Lamy Carter prior to this meeting and to start the discussion about how we would research, what sort of data extraction process, who would do the data extraction, who would actually dig the hole in the ground and put it in the ground. We're a place that we have a pretty good idea in talking with the sheriffs, with, with VSP. And also today I spoke with the DMV officer up on Route Four, how good places to put it on both ends of town. And it may be that we would stagger and just put in one the first year and it'd be our recommendation that's for eastbound traffic, cause that with the merge lane down here, that's more problematic. And then maybe depending on what you allocate in the budget and what we can get, maybe we do a second one a subsequent year. So maybe for ten thousand dollars, we can get two fully installed, et cetera, et cetera, or maybe they cost sixty-two hundred. And we have to put up a request for that second one in a subsequent.
So your request is for ten thousand?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, one more. I got a couple of questions too, for Chris, sorry. Now, is it, have, have you looked into different pricing for the ones that flash or strobe or change color, like such as blue lights and red lights, such as an example would be Rockland Town School?
We have, we have not because our charge for Route Four Implementation Committee was Route Four. And none of those features are allowed in any of the devices. They are allowed on town highways. So we had conversations with Chris and Lamy about other town roads. And towns can do things that, on town roads that the town can't do on state roads.
Sure, I got you. That's a good answer.
I'll be asking Sarah this again, also RRPC, if there's any grant money available for any of these. My current belief is there isn't, but you can check and see if there's any grant money available. And if there was grant money, then we just don't spend your ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, well, Sarah, yeah, Sarah brought this forward to me in the budget, our budget conversation today and she's gotten some quotes and we, you know, very seriously considering your request.
Thank you very much. And we have talked with other towns and learned what companies not to buy from.
Great. If you could pass that on to Sarah, that would be great, great.
And Megan, if I could just clarify that Chris Baird, as our road commissioner, has obtained some quotes for those standard stationary signs. And I'm just gathering the information from the department heads.
Okay.
But I certainly will keep my eyes open and look into whether there is any grant funds available for, for purchasing and installing those.
Okay, I, I didn't realize those quotes came from Chris. I, I didn't realize those quotes came from Chris. Thank you, Chris. All right. Anybody else? Apologize. All right, then I'm going to move that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.